Here we go. I call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass, October 16th at 6:00 PM. Let's all rise for the invocation of the pledge.
Dear Father, we, come before we thank you, my Father, for the country that we live in, the freedom that we enjoy. We thank you, my Father, for all the cleanup and that's going on around us. Thank you for protecting us. And we ask, my Father, that you be with each and everyone that has, in some way or another, experienced some loss. And we see the news, my Father, the fires in California, besides all the storms that we've had in our country. Pray, Lord, that we unite as one and that we support each other and lift each other up in prayer, my Father. I ask your guidance upon us, the City Council, that we make the right decisions for our city. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go to presentations and proclamations. We have recognition of Milagros Medina Municipal Court Clerk for receiving award for outstanding Court Clerk of the Year for the State of Texas.
Wow, that's amazing.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. I would like to introduce you to a young lady that you're familiar with, Milagros Millie Medina, who is my court clerk for the past two years. Millie is a dedicated, committed, hard worker employee and was recognized as Employee of the Year in February. She has contributed to the changes made in our court by implementing professionalism, exercising excellent customer service, internal and external, going the extra mile to assist everyone that comes through our door and providing the respect that the people deserve. Millie has played a big part in making improvements to the efficiency on how the court runs, implementing court orders, managing projects, training our additional staff member, meeting deadlines, and bringing the court up to date. She makes sacrifices by bringing her daughter when she's working on projects, bringing her after hours or on weekends, but she knows that she has an obligation and a commitment to make sure that the project meets deadline. Millie is involved in community events, shrimpery, fall feast, drunk or treat. She belongs to the city's event planning committee also. I nominated Millie as Court Clerk for the State of Texas thinking that we were divided in divisions because our city, our population is more or less between 8,000, I don't know if it's less now, or... But anyway, and then we have the metropolitan cities, Houston, Dallas, then Austin. And so I thought that we were going to be competing with municipalities our size. We attended the Texas Municipal Court Association banquet on the evening that the hurricane was going to hit. And I learned that evening, we learned that evening, that it was not by division or by sizes of municipalities, it was for the whole state of Texas. So I am very honored to introduce Millie as our Outstanding Court Clerk of the Year for the State of Texas. She got this beautiful award, her mother's on her way to bring it. Her mom is running a little late, but when she gets here, we'd like to show it to y'all and share it. It was a, it was a very chaotic evening for us because we knew that our city was getting hit by a hurricane and it was supposed to be joyous for us, for us, for our city, representing, you know, and being, representing among the other municipalities. It was very chaotic because, it was very confusing because it was joyous, but yet we knew that we had to come back and face what we had. And we wanted to be here with our fellow staff members, colleagues, and all that to help out. So Millie did not get to enjoy her moment because we were very emotional. And the, and the judge for the year was from Houston. And they needed to get back because they knew once it hit here, it was going to Houston. So it was a very confusing evening, but anyway, we feel very honored that our city was recognized in the state level.
Well, I just want to say hello to everybody. I just want to say hello to everybody, and actually, my mom's walking in right now, like, just on time. And I just wanted to show y'all what they presented me with. A little heavy.
He's moving away.
We don't want to break the camera.
He's done.
She's done.
That's beautiful. Congratulations.
Keep up the good work.
Yes, thank you, Millie, for all you do. Thank you, Henry.
Now we go to board and commission appointments for the Aransas Pass Municipal Development District. We have Mr. Rudy Abrego.
And Donald Vols.
It is one motion, right?
And also for the ones that are seeking the appointments.
There's two seeking, it's Rudy Abrego.
Donald Vols.
I mean, you've said that also the ones that are...
Right.
Okay, so it's for all of them?
Right. So we, so we're reappointing... Terri's... And filling the two vacancies. I make a motion that we reelect Stansberry, Gell, Bowers, and Gomez for their reappointment and fill the two vacancies with Vols and Abrego.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining. Oh, you have to abstain too. Because you're on there.
Okay, now let's go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine of the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. If this discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. I'll make a motion when approved, the consent agenda.
I second.
Now we go to Mr. Gary. We go to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to Gary.
Mr. Mayor and Council, under City Manager, first item, let me pull it up here, is the Consider an Act Resolution nominating the Board of Directors to St. Pat County Appraisal District, nominating individuals to the appraisal district. And each city, each entity may nominate up to five, and you have five names there. And the following individuals currently serve on the board, and the election will be held at a later time. So that's the action that's being requested, is a vote on those five nominees.
There were no other applications or submissions, just these five?
Just these five, yes.
I make a motion that we nominate John Curley, Bill Wilson, Dr. Matula, Jan Whitley, and Dahlia Sanchez to the San Pat County Appraisal District.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the next item, actually, next three items are issues that came before you at the last meeting. And you requested additional information and more investigation by Fernando. He has done that, and instead of, with your approval, instead of acting on all individually, if we could just take them all three at the same time, and Fernando, you want to address those three? And I have some pictures here for you also.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. On the three properties, I went and did some research on them, on both San Patricio and Aransas Counties. They only have three properties within our city limits, that they purchased in the past year, year and a half. On all three, one has already been sold to another owner, and the other two are still under next lots. The first one, the one on McCambles pretty much maintained, there's not much on there. The one on Whitney, I believe, is the one that has been sold already to another property owner, and that one has a lot of debris on it, but it doesn't belong to them anymore. And then the one on South Ninth, the three properties to the north of them, they're all brushed, so none of those properties are clear. But they still own the one on Ninth and the Campbell. And other than that, they sold the other one, so they only own three in our jurisdiction.
Well, that's, those properties are not the properties that we have.
No, 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 these are the ones that they already own. I asked to see how, if they were maintaining their properties or not.
Okay, I'm with you. Okay. Okay, those are the ones that they already own?
Yes.
Okay.
So on this one on South Ninth, it's theirs, right?
Yes, on South Ninth, they own that one.
Any notices to them about cleaning?
I would have to look at, for more information, but like I said, all the lots next to it, there's about three more, they're all the same. That whole area is wooded, it hasn't been cleared out, that whole block. So that's probably why they haven't cleared this one out as well, because then we'd have to make everybody in that neighborhood clear out their properties as well. And I know when they're wooded as such, we really don't touch them because there's nothing developed there. But as there's developing around them, then that's something we need to start really looking at because it's going to be a nicer order neighborhood where people are building houses and then you have this. So we can definitely follow up with this one. Like I said, the one on McCambles is being maintained right now, has been kept pretty clean.
Is there anyone here with next lots?
Any idea what they sold the property for? Because I know they finally got it next to nothing from us.
I had it on the appraisal, how much it was, it was under 10,000, it wasn't that much they sold it for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have to untable these first before we vote on them?
Do we have to untable it?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we untable six, two, three, and four, right?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to continue with the motion?
Yeah, and I'll make a motion that we sell the lots to the next lot, two, three, and four. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As we pointed out, that in the past, it was indicated that you said they must be maintained, and was wondering if that's in your request also.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the next item is a request for $1,000 from Halo Flight. And there are 501(c)(3), of course, a not-for-profit, and asking that request from the city. I understand this has been done in years, or a year singularly, past. That's the request before you from Halo. And they need that for their continued operation, and they make the request of all the entities they serve.
I want to make a motion that we donate $1,000 to Halo Flight.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the next item, as you know, the Coastal Bend Herald is no longer in existence. That had been the newspaper of record. And all that we're asking now, we can't use them anymore, they're no longer in existence. All that we're asking is that we go out and request RFPs for another newspaper of record. That's the request before you.
I'll make a... Go ahead. I make a motion that we authorize the city to go out for the RFP, for the official newspaper of the City of Aransas Pass. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's all under City Manager, Mr. Mayor?
Now we go to Development Services. It's Consider an Act on Ratifying Interjurisdictional Mutual Aid Agreement Between the City of Aransas Pass and the City of San Antonio.
It's, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what your normal procedure is, is... Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to briefly explain what it is. The mutual aid agreement with the City of San Antonio was entered into after the Building Official Association of Texas team left, after doing the preliminary damage assessment. They were also assisting us with the increased volume of permitting, plan review, and site inspections. The three building officials from the City of San Antonio, they've worked with us about what certifications we lack in our staffing in order to assist us with ensuring that when we get plans turned in, they can be reviewed, they can be inspected, and get people to repair as quickly as possible. The mutual aid agreement is a, one of the, our line items for a, to be reimbursed through FEMA because it is specific to the Harvey disaster. And it was entered into by staff, but requires council ratification.
I do have to say that three city inspectors that are here from San Antonio are so respectful. I've heard nothing but good things about them. I think that's... So I'd like to make the motion that we ratify the interjurisdictional mutual aid agreement between the City of Aransas Pass and the City of San Antonio.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consider an Act on Extending a Disaster Declaration issued on, by the mayor on August 25th, 2017, in response to Hurricane Harvey, and extend the declaration until November 6th, 2017, regular City Council meeting. I'll make a motion, we extend the disaster declaration until November 6th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is Consider an Act on Approving Contract with L&amp;B Incorporated for Design and Construction Management of New Elevated Water Tower. and construction management of new elevated water tower.
I'm back, I'm trying to give competition this time. This, during the emergency situation, we went off RFQs for engineering services. LNV was selected, our engineers, by the committee that ranked them, to help us do assessments for this portion of it, since our water tower is a priority for us, we went ahead and allowed them to begin the design, give us a contract for it. What you have before you is a contract to do the design surveying and construction management bidding for that water tower. I met with Mr. Villar earlier today, and plans will be completed within a month of approval from YAW, so if you approve today, within a month, the design will be complete, and we can begin bids. We're looking at, our estimate for cost is based on how fast we want it. We had estimated 2.5, that's around the ballpark where we're going to be, and we get a $2 million project if it takes the full year. We want to expedite it, we're looking more about the 2.5, where we had expected, and output is about six to seven months of construction time. So, right now, the contract is to award LNV, and allow them to go ahead and begin the design surveying and bidding process, and help us with construction management of the water tower. And Mr. Villar is here with LNV, if you have any questions for him.
I got a question. Is there certain companies that already build water towers, that already come with the engineering design and survey and all that, in one package at all?
There is some, but we have to go through the process of doing RFPs, if we want to go that route, and that's going to prolong it even more. The companies that, they provide the design, and then the companies that already come ready to build them. Being that the format we're using, we're doing single column to, for better aerodynamic and sustainability, it's going to require a better, a bigger foundation, and with the sand that we have here, they got to go deeper, and that's what's going to take us as long as curing the concrete foundation. From there, it'll start moving a little bit faster, once they start pouring the walls, but it's all going to be cement for the entire tower.
What would be the difference between us getting it, doing it the way we're doing it, versus one that's already engineered and comes in a package?
It'll be the same, because you still have to, they still have to go through the design process, because it's based on our criteria too, you got to see the soils you have, where it's located. There is certain standards for water towers, but it, they have to be modified regardless, based on where you're putting them. You can't just take a water tower that you put up in the hill country and put it here because of the soils. You got to take it into consideration, based on your foundation, and then the design strength, the rebar, all that has to be taken into consideration as well, so you still have to do modifications to the design regardless. So, it's just that we go at that point now, we have to come to YAW for, to go off RFPs, then advertise for two weeks, open bids, and that's just going to prolong us another month or two. So we'll be in the same boat in timeframe.
And a new water tower, is it going to have bigger capacity?
They're looking at that right now, and it looks like the capacity we have is sufficient for the entire city. They're also doing an assessment about, on, looking at a second water tower on the north side for future expansion, so that's a separate part that they're doing with the assessment portion of it, but for this water tower right now, based on the number of connections we have, and what we need to sustain based on TCQ standards, the size we had looks to be sufficient, but once they go full steam on the design, they'll verify that and determine if we need to do an upsize, but I think right now, the size we have is sufficient.
Is that also including future growth? Because I'd hate to build just for what we have right now, rather than thinking into the future?
Yes, and...
I don't want to, if it serves us, we have 50, to build it for 50, you know, should be expanded.
Yeah, because really, the tower is to maintain the pressure on gravity, and we have the two storage tanks that help supply that. So the tower, the size we have, will suffice for the entirety and future growth, and, but we are doing an assessment to determine if a second tower is actually necessary, because we, by the looks of it, we might have enough with what, if we replace this one, but we're looking at secondary as a backup, if we ever have an instance like we did this one, when we lose it. We also had a meeting with TCQ last week, and we come to find out that we can't be running on pump power, because the wear and tear on the pumps, and then there's a fluctuation in pressure, and that causes the water breaks that we're having. They are working with us to try to get us a solution, the engineers are working with us as well, as getting a pressure tank, or a continuous pump system that would avoid the breaks and keep constant pressure. So we're looking at that right now with TCQ and our engineers to get that resolved.
Is the, or, is the city responsible for the entire cost of the new water tower, or is FEMA money?
At the last meeting, we had with the governor of the state's fitting the bill for the water tower, 100%. And there's possibility of using grant monies for the second tower.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend, in this, having gone through this process before, that the council go with a different engineering firm than someone that was recommended by the tank company, because the engineering firm would be working for you and not for the tank company. There's always, rarely occurs, but there is a possibility of conflict of interest in that, and also, your engineering firm will be looking at things beyond just the structure, they'll be looking at things as Mr. Brago said, beginning and on further down. It may cost a little bit more, it gives the council a lot more control, and it gives the city engineer a lot more control over the quality and standards that need to be met. That's my recommendation.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that...
If I might, let me, let me point out to you that the agreement with LNV consists of two things, that, first of all, is a contract for services, and secondly, a, another document, which is styled general terms and conditions. The contract for services provides that the contract is between LNV and the City of Aransas Pass. The slight problem is that the general terms and conditions document states that it's between LNV and somebody by the name of U.S. Ecology Texas, so we need to make a little correction on your terms and conditions document.
Okay.
Other than that, everything's okay, we just need to make that change.
Oh, it's right here, U.S. Ecology, this agreement. So who is U.S. Ecology Texas?
Eric Villar, with LNV, Mayor and Council. U.S. Ecology is another client of ours, and what was, that was, we've got a standard general terms and conditions, and that's a blank that gets filled out.
They just used one old form, didn't change the name for it.
We grabbed the wrong one, so that should be blank.
Okay.
I was hoping they were going to pay for it or something. That would be nice.
All right, well, I make a motion that we approve the contract with LNV for the new water tower.
Sign and construction, how do you mean?
Okay.
I was trying to understand, like, is that they don't come standardized, that because, obviously, you can't take the water towers in the whole country and bring it down here, wouldn't it be, the foundation has issues in the actual tower?
Yeah, well, you've got to consider the base and your foundation, too, the walls, that's how you do it.
For, like, when a storm...
Yes, and...
And then you make those standard?
It's tough, because every city is different. Location, like, here in the coast, you have the windstorm, there might be a somewhere in another part of the coast that did require that, but then they might have less sand and more clay, it's very different.
So it's more of like the...
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we go to community enrichment. Consider an act on the issuance of bids for storm-related repairs at the Aransas Pass Civic Center.
I don't see Sarah here, so let me go ahead and present this to you. Simply asking to go out to bid, and we're still receiving damage estimates, but it'll speed up the process if you give us the okay to move forward with the bidding process. Again, all the numbers aren't in, we're asking to move forward to expedite, that's what's before you at this time.
Certainly, I make a motion that we go out for bids for the storm-related repairs to the Civic Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to Mr. Eric.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is just your updates for the month of September 2017. Nothing real big that stands out in this event, traffic stops are down, citations down as well, arrests way down, because we were without a jail for a period of time, we could only take in major events, and we had to take them straight to county. As far as staff complaints, there were none, recognition's four, there's a few highlights there, and those are your standard highlights, under patrol, CID, animal control. Nothing that really stands out, again, this report will be published online, if anybody wants to take a closer look, after this meeting, it should be online.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
What about your trip to DC?
Yeah, we did have a trip to DC, but that was, that's going to be, I think, the next month.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Updates.
I didn't even get a postcard.
I'm sorry, Billy. There's some good food up there, Billy, you should go, bring some ideas back.
Okay, now we'll go to citizen comments. Citizen comments is intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit presentation to three minutes, a recording is made of the meeting, therefore, please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address.
Thank you for this opportunity to present tonight. My name is Fay Dulaney. I am a public information officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration, Office of Disaster Assistance. Well, I'm just here to give you some numbers. The SBA/ODA, to date, has approved for Aransas Pass loans in a total amount of $8,351,800. Broken down for home loans, it is 139 home loans for $7,217,000, and 15 business loans for $1,134,800, and then we're looking at a total of 154. And I would like to also remind the city that the deadline to apply for both FEMA and SBA loans is quickly approaching, and that's October 24th. Yeah, it's pretty close. So if you guys can please just get the word out, October 24th is our deadline, and again, thank you for the time, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Jack Chaney, Commissioner, Aransas County. I just wanted to tell you how well, how pleased I am with the amount of work that's been done in Aransas Pass for the disaster cleanup. Y'all are certainly well ahead of the ball, to so to speak, but kind of give you an idea where the county is, Aransas County. As of Friday, we had done almost 650,000 cubic yards of vegetative debris. 650,000, I suspect by the time we do our three, our four passes, that we'll go over 2 million cubic feet. Now, that's just trees, you know, that's not metal, that's not any kind of construction debris or anything like that. I anticipate that we will probably go somewhere in the neighborhood of four to four and a half, maybe five million cubic yards of total debris. We are the second smallest land area county in Texas, but it has just been devastating, okay? However, the good news is, we're doing it. If you look at text dot, text dot has done, I think, I'm going to say, close to 200,000 cubic yards of debris just off state property.
Wow.
That is a lot of trees, but a week after, you couldn't find a leaf on a tree anywhere. Now, it looks like springtime, and that's the way the citizens are, and I appreciate... Tough topic for me, but I appreciate all the communities coming together, doing the things that need to be done, I appreciate the staff, and I want to welcome the new city manager, and I'm glad that everything is going well. If I can help you with anything, let me know.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Liz Brawley, 902 South Amont, and I just have some questions for y'all. Why are we terminating the big brush trucks as of November the 2nd? What made y'all come to that decision? There are so many people that are not even back in their homes yet, they're still waiting on insurance and adjusters, and is there a plan for the pickup after we discontinue the use of the big brush trucks? I mean, so many people still have things to do.
I'm sure you can answer that question. It's a good question we've been wrestling with ourselves, and a fair amount of discussion did go into that decision, and I am going to need some help from Lynn and maybe Kat, but they'll give you some insight into how that decision was reached, why we made that decision.
Because I know Aransas County is not discontinuing that for quite some time, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, the thing with Aransas County is we just have so much area, and, you know, it's just, and it, within the confines of the city and the confines of the county, it's like that with the locals.
I mean, so, I mean, what's on the streets now is going to be picked up by November the 1st? Is that correct?
That's... Mayor, Council, citizens. The process is, has many moving parts to it, and there's four steps to debris removal. The first step is the initial push, that's when the company comes in and helps us push the stuff off the roads, onto the right of way, so that we can get traffic going. The second stage is the first pass. The first pass is when our trucks go through and pick up the majority of the vegetation, get the big piles up, and continue that for that first pass. Right now, we're at, and during the second stage, which is the second pass, they're still focusing on heavy areas, they're also picking up not just vegetation now, but also picking up the construction debris as well. Again, focusing on those heavy passes. We have a monitoring company that keeps everybody above board, because FEMA does not write us a blank check. There's certain things that the debris removal company can and can't do, the monitoring company makes sure that the debris removal company is doing that, thus protecting our interests, thus protecting your interests. The monitoring company puts us at 65% done with that second pass, and so we're nearing that end point. The third pass is when they start picking up the small stuff, going back, getting all the places that they missed, where I understand that there's pockets that maybe not had anything picked up. That's okay, that's what the, the monitoring company keeps track of everywhere we picked up, is we've learned about the places that we've missed, then they'll come back and pick that up. The November 1st date is when everything needs to be on the right of way, that, that we will continue picking it up until we get it picked up, but we've got to have an end date to when it can be put on there. I'm already starting to see where contractors, mostly roofing contractors, are dumping their shingles on our right of ways, seen it bad in Aransas County. That is ineligible debris. FEMA will not pay to pick that up, the monitors won't let the debris company pick that up, any new construction remnants, things like that, that's where we're at. I often hear, we're waiting on our insurance. Your insurance will pay for that debris removal, the contractors that, these roofers are getting paid to haul that off. that off.
It did pay for mine.
The contractors are responsible for their trash. They're not putting all the...
So, you're saying that we can prove that the contractor's not putting the debris in front of our home, then it's eligible debris to be picked up. Is that correct?
Yes, but we're still saying November 1st is the deadline.
But I don't think, I'm taking into consideration that, oh, a lot of us have jobs that we have to work at, and we simply don't have the time to collect all the debris and put it in front of our homes.
Individual circumstances are individual circumstances. I'm just giving you the facts. This is where we're at, at this point in time.
Are you allowing at least an opportunity for an extension?
If you've got a question, we're going to have it. Counsel, how do you want me to handle this?
Okay, because at some point, isn't the city going to go back to absolute waste, and they start picking up the trash as they were before the storm? And is that the way we're going to pick up the rest of the trash that he's talking about at the time that we don't have?
The transfer station will be in normal operations on November 2nd. Our debris removal company is, as we speak right now, is working with our waste removal company to make for a smooth transition. Our once-a-month continuation of picking up brush will continue, but...allied wastes will continue, will pick up on November 2nd. They're just normal operations.
Okay, in another, in another thing, Ruben...
Okay, what about alleyways in behind? That, the water companies and the gas companies that drive down, and the city that have to drive down, is that a right of way, or is that not a right of way?
Not for the debris removal.
That's from the very beginning.
That's evident in people's yards. The people have moved stuff in our yards. We can't even get it out of our yards, but the city won't put it up if the volunteers do. And that has to do with the FEMA reimbursement. If I were going to your property, FEMA would not pay the city for their removal, because it has, because it's private property. That's why the public right of way, depending on what street you're on, it's measured from the very middle of the street. On Houston...
Alleyway behind Houston.
Well, the alleyways, the reason they can't go is because those trucks are so big, it has to be an improved right of way. They can't go on those dirt roads or the alleyways, or their trucks are going to get stuck. They're going to damage their vehicles, and a lot of times, they won't fit, or they could damage the utility lines that are in those alleyways. That's why they'd ask us that they have to be within the gravel reach from an improved right of way. But if you, if you have issues getting it from the alleyway to improved right of way, volunteer groups that, like Team Roof Con, are set up to assist. You have to just go register with them. They have equipment and volunteers that are assisting.
Volunteers took it to where it's at now, so.
If it's with it.
I'll just pay for it.
They're set up in Civic Center parking lot. If you go to where you'll see how it's registered, go and speak to them, and they'll register you and get your permission.
Sir, your volunteer group, do you know if that was a registered volunteer group with the city? Was it a registered volunteer group with the city?
All I wanted at the time, ma'am, was, I wanted it moved so I could fix the roof on my mom's house.
Sure.
I don't care where it came from. I wouldn't talk to the, to the police department. A week after the storm, I was told, "Put it on, put it on the street." Well, I could have used five blocks and not had enough room for it on the street.
Right, all of us, you're right. All of us are the same.
So, I put it in the back, so I could get the roof repaired, the fence repaired, which hasn't been done yet. And now, you know, we're not, I mean, that's all right. It's not going to break me to pay for it to haul it off, but a lot of people can't afford it.
We did advertise greatly to not utilize the alleyways.
And one thing to keep in mind, one, the, our monitoring company this week is going out through Aransas Pass to do assessments, to try to identify those pockets that have not been picked up yet, and where the, the new pickup company, DRC, needs to focus. In addition, DRC is adding two additional trucks in order to help get as much as possible by that November the 1st deadline. But if you, you know, please let the, what we've been doing so far, if you have a particular concern about your, that your pickup being picked up, go let the ways, the utility building know. They will send you an email. I've been sending that on to the project manager with DRC, and they have been responding as quickly as they can. If it was in the alleyway, that was, that was why they weren't able to go.
No, I mean, I never got a response back.
You're industrial district, the one that's outside the city limits. I know that brush got picked up by the, by the VPS, but I have a home I'm going to need to the street because I don't know who's going to pick it up. I'm asking about the taxpayers out there in that industrial district on 2725. I want to know who's responsible for picking up the actual debris.
2725 is the state. Any state highway, FM, 361, 2725, Indian Department Markets, that's state responsibility, okay? Now, I'm Galesby County Commissioner, precinct for San Patricio County. Just so everyone knows, if any of your residents live in the county, or county right of way is, county roads, we, our, our end date is this Friday, the 20th, okay? But our monitors will be doing the same thing, going out and checking for additional stuff. We have house trailers and stuff that's still being pushed to the roads, so, but some of that stuff we can't pick up. But like I said, the judge made a decision today to end ours on this Friday, close the business. Yes. Well, I recommend you get to the road by Wednesday. And if, and if anybody, call precinct office, 758-5276, if you're in the county, and it hasn't been picked up. And I can send somebody out there, look at it.
Good evening. My name is Carol Salinas. I live on South 11th Street in Aransas Pass. I'm sorry. I hope I don't repeat what has already been going in, but I think I probably came in right in the middle, because DRC sat here and told us, "We will not leave until the last pile is picked up." And I have trash, and it's being addressed as I came here tonight, I think, because I saw a truck on my street. I'm not talking my house, my street. They have not been to pick up the debris on my street one time. They have been and were really good about picking up brush. They picked up my brush twice, the entire street, did a great job. I was one that came up publicly and said, "Great job. You guys are awesome." But I don't think there's as many trucks with DRC as there were to begin with. There are probably five trucks zipping around the entire city to begin with, doing a great job. I have seen one green truck, I'm talking the entire city, recently. I don't think, I don't know what happened. I don't think they're running as many trucks as they were originally, as I believe the citizens, the council committed to or agreed with. But I do know, now we've come up with this November 1st deadline. I do have additional brush, two huge piles, one made by volunteers, because I had a lot of hanging branches over the driveway, over the cars, over the house, that my husband and I could not get on our own. Volunteers came with pole saws. They took a lot of stuff down, so we still have quite a bit of brush. And it is there. It will be there, I guess, until someone picks it up. But a lot of people work. Like the gentleman said, they work. They cannot get out there and haul their debris out. Mine's been out since about five days after the storm. But it's just, something has slacked off. I can see a difference. I don't know what it is, but I just, I'm going to guess that every one of these people here has got the same concern I do. The squeaky wheel gets grease. I squeak a lot, in my voice, too. But I did want to just, it's something has changed. I don't know what's happened. It's not getting addressed as quickly as it was for a while. I'm going to change subject just a little bit. I wanted to mention this a couple of months ago. There is no place on the city website for an emergency call. About three months ago, our water went off. There was something, I believe, a pump station shut down, but everyone was calling me because they know I come speak up. How do, how do we get hold of the city? It was on a Sunday. There was nobody. I made the initiative to call the dispatch, because I just guessed that that might be the way to do it. But it's not on the city website. I dig, I dug it, and I checked again tonight. It's not on the city website. Anyone that wants to know how to get hold of city crews in an emergency on a weekend, you call the city hall number. You're not going to get through.
You call the police department, dispatch.
But how many people know that, if it's not on the website?
It is on the website, Carol. If you search "emergency," just the word alone, it, it pulls up in the list, and it says it right there, "After hours and weekend emergency call out." But what I think we can do for the automated system is maybe add something in there. I can get with Jeff to where if this is an after-hours emergency, public works or whatever, that you can hit a button, and it'll automatically transfer folks.
From the city hall number.
Yeah, it's, and she's right. It's not prominent on the website when you get there, but we knew that there was going to be problems with the website. That's why one of the things we built into the top of it was the "I'm looking for emergency." Boom, it shows right up in that list.
And now that you mentioned, I knew that that was an option, but not men, I forgot it. I went down to contact us. I went through all the pages, and I did not, yes, if you did. How many people are going to know to go to the search engine and look for emergency contact?
We, and we can place it in multiple areas. That's what I'm saying with the general or generic calling system. I'll get with the IT and see if we can have that option added just to help.
Okay. And another, an old complaint of mine. Our water system, I mean, our billing supposedly is automated, but still, if I go to my bank, online payment system, and I make a payment to the city of Aransas Pass, the bank is going to have to make a check and mail it here. There is no way that the bank can do an automatic payment to city of Aransas Pass. I mean, we did an automated, updated system, but we're still back in the, in the stone age. And I have heard from some contractors, but they say that Aransas Pass is one of the most difficult towns that, in the area, going through this storm to get permits and to deal. They say the bureaucracy here, Ingleside has simplified things, other areas, and they say that Aransas Pass is very difficult to get anything accomplished. So, my three minutes. Thank you, because I have heard that. I speak up here and am city manager. People are getting to know that I'm going to come and say things, and so they come to me, where they might not know the process to go to city council. So, I do hear some of these things. Thank you. I think my three minutes is up.
I have a question for Lynn or Kat. Maybe y'all can answer this. Do you know how many trucks we had, the big, there are eight? Are there still eight today?
There are another one or two. When we do hit that phase three, that third pass, will be reduced down to two or three.
Okay. And I, one thing I do have to agree with Ms. Salinas on is, DRC did tell us repeatedly that they would be here till the last of the brush pickup, or it was all picked up. I understand what you said about now we've got construction companies coming in, and they're using the free pickup and just throwing all their construction debris out as well, and that's not what FEMA or what the DRC company is here to pick up.
I think we're getting into an issue of, you've got to weigh the difference between how much is going to be our 10% versus can we do it our own selves at a lot lower cost?
Right.
Because, because the more they pick up, the more the bill goes, the more the 10% goes. So, then, I think we need to start looking at, and I think that's what Lynn was looking at. At, at what point is it going to cost the city more money to do it to DRC or just terminate it, and then the city starts picking up the rest of the trash that we have?
Just for the council's information, compared to the entirety of Aransas County, DRC has picked up 260,000 cubic yards. We're estimating total of 300,000.
But they worked like FEMA's the first two, maybe three weeks?
I think we probably saw more of a difference because they were going around focusing on the big piles.
All right. Thanks, Lynn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I have some pictures here. I bought three copies, so y'all can share each two while I speak. Y'all don't mind?
Please tell us who you are.
Give your name.
Your name and address.
My name is George Pena. My name is Jorge Pena. I live at 408 South 12th Street. The building you're looking at right now used to be a Verizon building. Verizon sold it to Frontier, okay? I had, I was here about five years ago to address this issue. How did the city council let a commercial building be in a residential area? All the people that live around that area are 60 and above, okay? That, those telephone poles you see there, they have that ugly smell to them. We got sick. We had to leave to go to Corpus for, for the day, because we got sick. That stuff has that toxic stuff in it, okay? And we left, we left this past weekend, too, because we got sick again, okay? Now, I'd just like to know if the council would at least address this issue with y'all, because I don't know how to go about this, but I'm a city, I'm a, excuse me, I'm not too used to talking to the council. I live here, and my front house face that, faces that building. My wife's been there for 35 years. I've been with my wife for 20 years. We've always tried to tell the city council, "Why can't y'all put a stop to this? Why do y'all let this building be there in a residential area?" It's two blocks away from an elementary school. It's five blocks away from a high school, okay? And people are getting sick with that stuff. And I heard that they're supposed to bring another load in there and put another load of that black telephone post, okay? And that stuff is toxic. Our house stinks. When the sun hits it, oh my, y'all wouldn't want that in your yard. I think y'all would do something about it, and I apologize to the council, but I have to voice my concerns, okay? Because it really does stink. And not just it stink. If y'all look at those pictures, y'all see where they took out other telephone poles and just dumped them right there, in a residential area, like a dumping ground. It's like a dumping ground. And I don't know if y'all can help me, but I'm here to see if y'all can do some kind of help with this, because it's horrendous. And I know that any of y'all would not want this. And y'all, you know, when y'all open your doors, what do you see? And then, for it to be so toxic on it, you know, I thank the council for hearing me out, and I hope y'all can get together, maybe do something for us. I think, and I don't, not a politician, but I think the council or the city has to make some kind of arrangements to get this building out of that place. It's been over, that place has been about 20 years. But it's in a residential area.
Been there since 88, when I moved into, I live right down the street.
You know, you know what I'm talking about. Thank you very much. I have a pleasant evening. God bless.
Thank you. So, is DRC picking these up, or is the phone company? Okay, so they need to come in and, and take care of that?
Yeah.
I mean, it's all temporary.
All right.
Mayor, Council, Riley Williams. I live on North 10th, and I hate to keep going back to debris stuff, but clearly debris is a big issue. And, you know, us as citizens, we know y'all have been doing a good job. We know that it's been getting picked up. But I guess we're just not understanding why we're terminating the help, or if there's a way that we can be proactive and get the help extended. We're not sure if it's a contract that, you know, is due on November 1st, if it's something that has to do with reapplying for FEMA for the help. I do know and am aware that our neighbor... I do know and am aware that our neighboring cities like Port Oranza, it took them five different times to keep applying and keep after FEMA to continue the, the, the help. And so after being proactive and on top of it, they finally got it approved. And I, I just wasn't sure if that was something that would be an option. And also I know that they're, they're mainly focusing on, you know, the, the areas where we drive all the time, you know, commercial and the big areas. But, you know, there's also places out in, in the annexed area of the city. Is that also the city's doing? Cause there's roads down there, you can't drive. You cannot drive down the roads. Yeah, and I mean, it's, it's 10 foot tall. And kids and stuff live down there and they, they, you know, rattlesnakes, mosquito breeding grounds. And there, there's also other places where it is brush that's piled high and the grass is just as high grown through it as the brush is, so. And it's right in the middle of town. So we know that the trucks haven't picked those things up. And I mean, it's becoming a health hazard and a nuisance and just more. And, you know, it's just scary to us that we're gonna lose our help. And we, we wanna know what, what we can do to be proactive other than, you know, doing everything that we can to, to keep our homes livable or get our homes livable, plus deal with debris. You know, what else can the city do to be proactive to keep this contract and to keep these FEMA people here? Cause I mean, we need it, we need it bad.
Are you asking about extending the FEMA application for individual assistance or the debris removal?
No, the debris removal. Like I wasn't sure if November 1st was the end of the contract through FEMA or if it was, like, why, why, what happened, why this November 1st debate?
The November 1st deadline was a good, just because we're at the, the point of the, the second pass where we're at more than 65% picked up. Honestly, our monitoring company expected us to do the deadline sooner than this. Just because after an event like, like this, we could, they could continue to pick it up for years and years.
Yeah, yeah.
And, but the, what we're looking at is not only like setting the rebuilding phase as far as like trying to make sure we're not picking up debris that's being done for new construction. We're also looking, we are looking at that FEMA reimbursement side as far as what the portion of the city is gonna end up having to pay.
Right.
And, but we can, you know, and we will take the concerns that have been brought forward. We can, you know, address it with our state officials and, and see, you know, see what the options are. I just, I, I know that from what, I spoke to True North today regarding this because there's been a lot of concerns. And, you know, their, their response was, it doesn't matter when you set the date. It is always going to be not enough time for everyone.
Of course.
And, and the, the best, the city, we're, we're gonna try as best we can to work with people and do pickup and, and keep going. The, the, the reason for this, this day, this deadline, it's not the, the last day to pick up, it's just the last day to get it to the right of way.
Okay, well, and who decides, like, who is the monitoring company that goes around? Like, are they going around to literally, I mean, are they going around to the annexed part of the city?
Every truck. That little black truck, that little black car?
They're a rare find.
They follow them everywhere they go.
And see, but some of the areas that aren't being gone to, are they assessing those areas to say that, oh yes, they're 65%?
Let me, definitely like, you know, what, the, the specific streets and stuff? You know, they like for us to let them know. And again, like, when we get them, we don't call the individuals back. We send them an email over to the, to the debris pickup company for them to.
Now, is there a direct, and I don't know if you're allowed to get that, is there a direct email address that our residents can send pictures and emails directly to that company to say, hey?
I can ask, so far they have directed us to, you know, collect it.
That way, well, then it's, you know, on the residents too to.
She's your board of contractors.
Send everything to her.
Send everything to her. Send everything to her.
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly, far the monitoring by following the brush pickup truck around. I would think monitoring would be driving throughout the city to determine the needs, not following the brush.
What, what they have to do, in order for us to get finger reimbursement for the debris pickup, the monitors have to verify. What happened was in previous instances, the, it was a beauty. People were, they were debris removal techs, they were saying, yeah, they were saying, we had a big trailer full. It wasn't all the way full. So the monitors evaluate the type of brush or the type of debris being picked up, how much that there is, where it's being picked up from.
It's marked by GPS marker. Each, each location is marked by GPS marker, okay? They're there, they're the police to keep an eye on the debris pickup people to make sure they're actually picking up what they say they pick up and, and not just taking half a load. Cause they actually check the loads as they come back into the yards to drop off, okay? They're monitoring the contractor, yes. Right.
Yeah, but what we've been doing for the, as far as that, is most of the complaints have come to our.
You're losing patrol.
Discussion for issues. When they get those up front, and that's in, and we send them, give them an email and then we can call the list, you know, especially if it's a, a, this is someone with disability, if it's a life safety issue, you know, we, we forward it to them. I called my city email.
Can you take your spit with her after the meeting?
Okay, well, we gotta, we gotta keep going.
And we're doing the same way in the county outside the city.
Okay, now we're, now we're gonna follow my hourglass.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Pham. I'm, and my wife and daughter are here. I've been coming in here a lot and every time I come in, I get out, I didn't get no result out of it. Just more depressed on top of what I, my business are getting right now. And I come here to see if y'all gonna be in the closing section on my case later and I hope I can get something out of it this time. Because I have a deadline on the SBA to get along with them and I really don't wanna lose that opportunity. My business, I don't make a whole lot of money like Harrison Jensen down there or the Breakfast Willie where they can have their own money to fix their property and then CD will reimburse them back through their long-term contracting lease or something like that. I don't have that kinda money. The seawar is the infrastructure in that area and something I cannot afford to repair. I like to do my part in my contract, fix up my pier and dock surrounding area. I wanna live up to that contract, but I can't do it because that seawar is falling on, on me right now. And every day I come down there, it just, it just make that hole bigger and bigger. And it just stressed me out. My, my, my dock back there keep coming apart from the building and I'm afraid my kid gonna fall in there one day. And I don't know what to do, it stresses me out. And I'm looking for GLO to help, I'm looking for everyone to help, trust me. I will, I'm trying to get this Channel 6 to come by one of these days to see what I'm dealing with. And like I say, today I hope I can get something out of your guy meeting later on. Help me, please. I need, I need that business. That business don't make a whole lot of money for y'all to interested in fixing me up. But I tell you what, I draw a lot of tourists come down here. Breakfast Willie living on what we doing here too. We draw more people to Breakfast Willie to store the boat. I draw a lot of people to the hotel businesses, to the gas, grocery and to restaurant. We draw a lot of business. You have to give me a chance, look in that situation. And I say, I don't ask for much, I wanna live it up on my contract. I wanna fix up my place nice, but I can't do nothing if that seawar is not fixed. That's the infrastructure in that area and it's been there back in the 40. And I don't think it's fair for me, same the year later, for me to come in and keep up the wear and tear which has been aging. And it's real hard for me to afford to do that. That's all I'm saying, please help me out. Thank you, thank you very much.
My name is Stacy Bills. I live kind of in an odd area because I live on 1069. The front of me is county, the back of me is city. I own all the way to Mesquite Circle. I'm asking for everybody to rethink the brush pickup because for somebody like me, I have well water. I flooded my entire house, we're unlivable. I'm having to live with my parents. Due to the amount of people who also have well water, we are three weeks out waiting on parts. Therefore, the items that are inside of my garage cannot be pulled out to be cleaned to see what can be salvaged and what does have to go to the street because I don't have water to clean anything. So that is something that, you know, for y'all guys to think about is that, is us who are on well, because there's not a bunch of well people in our area. I think we have three. And at one point I was number 80 on a list. And that was one contractor. The others were over 100. So that is something for you guys to honestly think about, whether it's city, whether it's county, whoever, is there are still those of us who had to wait on our adjusters. And then once our adjusters came, we couldn't clean anything. We don't have car washes to take it to to clean it. So we're stuck, we're literally stuck. If I put it on the highway and wait for y'all to come pick it up in a month or whenever it takes, that's also a hazard. So it's kind of, it's stuck. So that's something, like I said, for you guys to, to honestly think about. Especially with me being both city and county, so.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kirk George, 1440 Morgan Lane. I've lived in Oranza Pass area since 1960. I have seen many, many changes in this area. I'm here on behalf of Steve, the captain's bait stand over there. He's a good friend of mine. I've been a shrimper, the regulations and everything run me out of that business. So I decided, well, I'll get a bait stand. I got the bait stand and I can't tell you fellas how much, how hard of work that is for such a little bit of money. Steve tells me he needs a bulkhead fixed and he's on a lease. Well, I don't believe that's his responsibility to repair that bulkhead. It's like you renting a house and the roof blows off of it. I don't think that's your responsibility to fix the roof. I also like to point out how important a bait stand is to this area. When I run the crab man, 80% of the customers, San Antonio, Austin. That's a lot of input into this city that comes in. If they don't have any bait, where they going? They're going to Rockport on the Port Oranza. We need to stop them in this city. This city needs to grow. You need to give him every consideration you possibly can. And then FEMA can, y'all get any money from FEMA for that? Is any funds allotted for FEMA to fix that area down there? Hurricane I come in, you built that $3 million.
We're looking at.
Built that $3 million grass bird patch down there across Finn and Feather.
But, well, there's, there's a few different funding avenues we're looking at. As far as 100% going through.
Oh, are you looking at the harbor?
Correct, going, we're looking at the bulkhead repair in the harbor. We're looking at, we're trying to find avenues for that.
Well, I, I just wanna say, Steve is a hardworking man. He's got his entire family working to keep that place running. And he does not have the money to fix a bulkhead, I can tell you that. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Vicki Smith. I live at 441 South 7th. I think what's got most of the people upset was the memo that y'all put out as far as the debris goes, was y'all said would be at our, the homeowner's expense to be picked up. That got me a little upset. So, I mean, I understand we're gonna put the brush out and y'all are gonna pick it up, but is it still gonna be at our expense?
You mean for D, for the debris removal?
After November the 1st. It was on Facebook, on the police department Facebook, and then it also come over the phone. And they said that after November the 1st, any debris was gonna be at the homeowner's expense.
I think that wording was an, was an error. Again, the, it's the November 1st deadline is a deadline to get it to the curb. They're still gonna be picking up under the city contract with DRC. But it's, it's not the last day for pickups, just.
I understand that, but I wanna know about the homeowner's expense.
The Post, the Post doesn't exactly say at the homeowner's expense. It says after, and this was the Post put out on the city page. We did share it through the police department to get the word out. It says after this date, the property owner will be responsible for the removal of the debris from the property. So for example, like the shingles were brought up earlier. The debris company is gonna pick up that, my understanding, if it's part of the hurricane?
Shingles are, are.
It's not picked up at all? No, 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 by, yeah, I have it, I have it pulled up here, ma'am. The, the debris that's related to the storm will be collected by DRC, but it needs to be put out by the deadline and they're gonna continue, they're, DRC's gonna continue past the deadline, my understanding, to collect that debris that's put out. Then after that, things are gonna go back to normal with the absolute waste for the city doing the bulk removal. But there are some things that, for example, televisions, the electronic waste. DRC will pick that stuff up, that's part of their program. But you can't put a television out and get, get our bulk collection to pick it up. They don't pick up stuff like that. So that's why they're saying you, you, you're gonna be held responsible for it. If you have a broken TV that needs to go out, big box tube.
So you're not talking about the brushes, so if you're talking about the.
Brush will, brush will go back to absolute, but it's not gonna be as frequent. Right now, DRC is going, they're doing their daily routes and stuff. But when they go back to absolute, then you're gonna go back to that like monthly pickup by absolute. It's gonna be less frequent and they, they probably also in the contract like before, they only pick up smaller portions. They don't, they're not gonna be picking up these mountain high mounds from the debris, so it can be a problem. The other thing is, is when contractors come in, they are responsible for removing their own debris. We do not pick up.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Fine them.
Yeah, but.
I mean, if they're doing it, fine them.
But they, they, I mean, the homeowner needs to be taking that. If you see, if the homeowner sees that they're throwing stuff out at the curb, they need to stop that, tell them to pick it up and they need to haul it off. Otherwise, the city's gonna come back to the homeowner and say, nope, your contractor threw this out at the curb, you're responsible for the removal. And that puts you in a whole nother bad situation.
So, and I have another question. The garbage people that we have picking up the regular trash, what's going on with them? We're not getting picked up like we should. I've had three times already and Saturday was the last time that they've not come by my house to pick up the garbage.
We can find out into that. If you can give, Mary, can she give you her address and you can follow up?
I've called up here several times over it.
Okay, give her, give her the address and let her follow up with it specifically, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ruben Rodriguez at 305 North Lamont. All of my concerns about the debris pickup that Dan answered. Now, the one remaining question is, are the demolition permits still lax?
Right now, yes, the city is still allowing demolition without the permit. But that is something the council will need to consider going forward. Staff would recommend that we can, we do permitting. Waiting would be, if preferred, but that way we can keep traffic, especially since now that we have this deadline coming up. We're putting it on the curb.
So I have a specific concern is, I have a structure and the certificate that was placed on the structure. Okay, it said that the structure was damaged by the hurricane, structurally damaged. That's in. Okay, it said that the structure was damaged by the hurricane, structurally damaged. That's incorrect. And now, according to that certificate, no one's allowed to enter the home. But there was no damage from the hurricane. And now, but I do want to take advantage of the demolition permits being lax. And there are two areas of the structure that I want to take down. And those are because the, the pitch on the roofs are flat and the woods rock. So I want to take those two parts of the structure down. But I'm, I have no intention of taking the rest of the structure down. There's nothing wrong with it. It's still structurally sound.
Um, just so you know, and the, the red, green and yellow placards that we'll put on the buildings, if you have a red placard, it's not preventing you from going in. It's not restricting access. Those were just what we call the windshield assessment. The, whenever the Building Official Association came in, they did purchase a very preliminary, basic damage assessment. And so red was just, is, it was damaged badly. And that's how we report back to FEMA in order for them to look at our total damage and inventory for the town. But it doesn't, uh, so the red placard doesn't mean you can't go in. But you can.
Mine's yellow.
Okay, then.
But it does say.
Just use caution, as we, as the people use caution.
Maybe I'm misreading them. So I can apply for a permit, the permit fees lax, and take those two parts of the structure down?
If you can check in with us in a couple of days, I think we'll have a little bit clearer idea of how we're gonna handle that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions? All right.
The city council will recess for a second.
See you again.
See you next meeting.
We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay.
We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate law altogether for their dumping all the coal and stuff.
And that's all, this is temporary. They're not relieving the coal.
No, but I'm just saying, no.
But they do, but they do stay. Their new coal is gonna be installed.
But AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do. Okay. We have to get off right here.
Yeah, I, I.
Because AEP has a separate. Yep. And they, you know, they do.[1342.00]